Yeah, I missed that one and I'm kinda glad, I guess.
We should have uniforms.
Uniforms?
Yes.
I'd go for uniforms. Do you know how much time that would save? I feel like, what am I gonna wear today? Oh, bye. Cole County? Hello?
Go buy like five white shirts.
Hey Debbie, new world sucks.
Yeah, but you're gonna, you're gonna buy something from them?
No.
Terrible.
They lie.
G R E G W H I C.
Shower, right?
Yes.
I will call the commission order to have the minutes report.
We do, we have done most of the reports and the county special.
We have money, I hope. Maybe? Alright, Commissioner Committee lays on reports and announcements of upcoming meetings and/or events. We do have the radio show on Friday. I can do it, you guys can do it, just let me know what your all's preferences is.
Friday the thirteenth.
Friday's probably not good for me, so.
Not good for you? Jeff?
I think he did it last time.
I can do it.
Who did it last time?
I think Jeff did.
I think you did it last time.
Okay, then, your turn.
Alright.
As I say, I can do it when I can, it's, don't matter to me.
I love Warren now.
We got a safety meeting today for salute to America.
Restability Engine Show this weekend. Chamber Golf Tournament's Monday.
Nine one one committee's supposed to meet tomorrow.
What time? Jeff says five thirty.
We have a nine one one committee again?
Five thirty.
They started meeting again?
Wherever they.
They meet once quarterly, we put it in our last contract.
Okay.
Never meeting once quarterly.
Where do they?
Shepherd's. E S P.
Who's on there? Are you on there?
Peewee, no, no elected.
Okay, Peewee's still on there? Okay.
Like you remember, he was on the number. It can't be anybody who's current officer or city.
No, they were still meeting, so now we said they have to meet, that's right.
Alright.
Have to meet to talk about not having anything to meet about.
Unfinished business. Since Dave Sylvester, familiar doctor, has viciously come forward to give us an update. Dave, I'm gonna let you go first so we can get you out of here.
That was quick, I'm in no hurry today, but.
You're not in a hurry? We could jump ahead and then we.
You don't make any special things for me, I'll go whenever you need me to.
Then we got three little bitty items that shouldn't take very long and then we can get back to you, if that's okay.
Sure.
Discussion proposed internet and ethernet upgrade. Dale?
We finally got the long awaited quotes for, this is to just upgrade the speed without extending the contract. Uh, they give two quotes, one's for fifty meg total and the other one is for ninety meg likes total. And that's the highest they're offering. Um, the fifty meg would provide ten, ten and ten to the remote sites. The ninety meg would provide twenty, twenty and twenty to the remote sites. And then the residual was, is our internet, dedicated internet device. And, uh, obviously I'm gonna recommend we go with as much as we can get, but.
And the, the cost, is that an annual?
That is, yeah, that's, uh, no, that's monthly.
What's our current number, monthly?
Nine eighty-six.
Well, but you gotta count all the three sites too.
Oh, I'm sorry, the total cost?
Yes.
The increase at the bottom compared to the total cost. Total cost at the bottom.
And we are paying, I don't know, it's, it's a few hundred dollars more just because we didn't get a thirty-six month.
Eighteen hundred dollars annual is the cost?
Monthly.
Monthly, that's the additional monthly cost, if we go up to.
So it's not double, but if we're getting, uh, three, we're actually getting over three times the bandwidth. For twice the cost.
Right, Colonel, we're paying eight thirty-one, we'll move to the eighteen oh nine for the three remote locations, up at the top in yellow. And then courthouse part will go from nine fifteen to the seventeen forty. Coming back the other way will be the fifty.
But, like you guys talked about on our last meeting, there's no such thing as too much to this, unfortunately, I mean. Uh, it does seem to be what the next is gonna offer.
And again, this is not extending our thirty-six months already predate contract, this is them living within the thirty-six months, so if we can rebid again, the better.
And it will save us money, yeah.
And it provides a high speed to jail too.
The jails have their own.
They're completely online, so. The more we can get, the better off we are.
I would second that from health and our perspective.
Yeah, health is, health is dying, I mean, I get it almost, well, I was gonna say multiple times a week they can't work.
Yeah, we, we jam each other up frequently, yeah.
Is, I mean, are, are we always gonna be stuck with one service provider?
No. I mean, well, there, we got qualifications that we need for anybody providing the service. Uh, I mean, there's, we had to provide a point to point between us and each of the remote sites. We have our V O I P phones that have the quality of service component that some people don't offer. So there's a lot, I mean, it, but I'm not gonna say that we're the only ones offering this service, I'm just saying at this point they offer all the services we need. The other thing that's gonna be, Richkey's hitting me over the head with, is the fact that if we change a provider, our IP addresses will change because the provider owns a block of item numbers. And when we have to go change that, we have to change the ones that go out to the world. So we'll be out of service for email and stuff to outside people for a few days because it just takes that long to propagate new numbers and stuff. And we would have to redo all of our, well, technical stuff, D P F tunnels, all these things have to be changed because they're all rely on.
That's a component of rebidding and going through a transition process.
To a different provider, yes. So there's some cost, there's some hidden costs involved with cha, excuse me, changing to another.
I know yesterday and last week we stuck through demos on the financial part. Fortunately, that's where, fortunately, that's where most of it's going, internet based stuff and stuff. And I don't know what kinda way that would be on this system, but I'm sure it will take a toll on you as far as people accessing it. You know, if we wanna go to four D speed and get their check stub via the web, so we need to.
And like I said, there's no such thing as too much, I mean, you're, it's like, if it's in, if it's available, somebody's using it, so.
Jeff, what do you got to add?
I'm fine with it, if we need it, we're gonna be using more. I don't wanna have to come back in six months and be doing this again, so.
I agree.
Where's the money gonna come from?
Uh, currently, we charge EMS for their connection, we charge public works for their connection, connection, out of their funds. Of course, the health department is out of our fund and then ours is out of ours.
The assessor. They got, don't forget them. Always got email.
So I mean, does everybody have, I mean, are we gonna be doing transfers to cover the added expense for every department?
I'll probably wait till the end of the year.
We'll have to sign a few adjustments in the year.
And not every department because we do pay these basically out of the health department, the two funds, and then the rest of it comes out of one twenty seven. So potentially it'll be four items on that transfer.
Um, so they ask four hundred, I mean, you don't know, I mean, you're thinking that's all gonna be internet based and is this gonna be enough to handle all that too, or?
Not so much internet based, um, just the applications for employee access, for vendor access, for, you know, depending on whether we do all that, it's gonna, there's gonna be a lot more traffic, let's say, on the internet. On account of, would you say?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
It definitely offers more capabilities for the employee or an outside vendor to come in and check something in our system through a website. So it, it's gonna create more traffic.
But our software is not housed by no means.
I mean, you know, I don't think we have any options, really.
Meeting here, I mean, this was something we didn't do last year either, and now we're doing that. Just, every one of these things just adds, adds more to it, so it's, you know, it's not, it's never gonna go backwards, it's always gonna go to be more. Can't itemize everything right now, but I guarantee you between now and next year it will increase whatever we're doing will be more, and it'll probably just continue on after that.
Yeah, I can just say, I, I don't like it, I mean, I don't like where it's going, I don't like all the costs associated with all the software and everything else, and, I mean.
Well, the other thing is we're labeled, because we're business, you got a premium, you pay a premium on service versus a home, but that's, that's the nature of the beast.
Well, you know, I don't, I, I will echo one thing that Chris is saying, I think it's important for us to keep in mind is, I have a problem with the increased software costs as a general, general statement. I acknowledge we're gonna have to pay more for internet, we're gonna use more of it, and we're gonna be going to more and more software. The other side of that is, we have to come up with savings to justify it. It's not enough to say, okay, we're gonna buy a new three hundred thousand dollar software program and it's gonna cost us an extra thirty grand a year to maintain it. And when we say, well, what benefit do we get out of that? Well, it's a new system. Well, we like it. Well, hey, it's good. At some point, there has to be actual savings, you know, the concept of automation is reducing headcount. And that's not always the case, I acknowledge that, and there are often times when there are requirements that are imposed that you have to come up with software. But we, we have to be cautious not to get in the realm where we just say, new software.
Some of the things we're really running into is what we have though, like the four hundred and stuff, is that those are really getting sunsetted and it's not like it's an option, you have to go somewhere. And unfortunately, there's not like any lateral, same price, we do the same thing on something different, it just doesn't seem to be an option on most of the things we look at.
I think we're all okay with doing this, because we have to, but, I mean, you're, you're hearing the, the hesitancy in, as the trends that are going forward.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I mean, if, you know, if we can be more productive and like Mark said, reduce the number of staff that it takes.
We have people that can't do their job, that's a physical reality, so we had to get them before they could.
We got, we got several folks like that, yes.
Alright, do you need to vote on this? We have a contract.
There's no contract, we just need a, we just need the approval and we just email it back to Saint.
I entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second. Call roll.
Yes.
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 Our roll call vote's approved. Thank you very much, thanks for your patience, Dale.
Thanks Dale.
Aerial lift platform, are we back to this thing again?
Yeah, we are revisiting this from a few weeks ago. Um, I did touch base with Hertz, if you remember, Fabic was five dollars more on the, the genie itself. And the discussion that I was supposed to go back and get clarification on was, is the training that was bid in Cole County? The answer to that is yes. Um, again, all the warranty work would be performed at Fabic. And so, I mean, kind of based on that, the lowest and best bid is one or the other, and I'm not sure which, as far as the super straddle, we still think that O E R is the way to go with that. It's the, the least of the three.
You got the numbers on that again?
So, as I recall, Hertz, if we have to do training, they, we go there, they come here?
No, they come here, it was included, up to seven people, that was included in the bid. The question that we wanted to get clarification on was, where is that? The answer is, it is in Cole County, they come to us.
Okay. Well, we need to do something, guys, I entertain whatever y'all wanna do.
I move that we award the genie and the super straddle to Fabic, Jefferson City.
Both of them?
Yes.
I'm second for discussion. Motion, second, discussion.
My, my thoughts being there is that when you buy local, you get it serviced local and people take care of you a little bit better, and so, um, they can do all the, all the training, they can, they can do the yearly inspections and, or the yearly trainings on it. And I just, I feel like for five hundred bucks, that's worth doing business with Fabic.
Well, it's eleven hundred though. Cause O E R's got it for forty-four ninety-five, so that's why I was looking, it's a big jump. If it was a minimal amount, I would tend to agree with you. Cause I'd like to keep as much of it local as well. So if we get it from O E R, we gotta have it serviced there?
That's, Greg, explain to them, that's just the.
O E R will provide the equipment, service work will still be done out of Fabic, since Fabic isn't authorized dealer.
And really, you're gonna have more problems with the genie itself than the straddle, the straddle's just the basket?
Basically, the straddle is just a, a lift kit for the unit to get it up over these tables and stuff that are pouring concrete over at the jail, uh, so we can just travel on the top of them.
Gotcha.
Basically, if there's any problem, it will be with the A W P thirty, which that'll either have to be taken out to CAD or Fabic or they'll come here and service it, either one.
And they will service it even if we get it from O E R?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I would tend to think that, I mean, that's just the big price difference there, big price swing.
Well, it is a big price difference and, I don't know, I mean, I'm sure Jennifer probably hasn't talked to O E R, but you can see where they're at on the genie and, you know, I mean, it's, it's a difference on the super straddle. I don't know, I just, I hate splitting this stuff up. And that's where I'm at, I mean, to me, Fabic was the overall best bid on both, and so, um, I mean, it's like parting out, parting out your supplies that, for, to build a house or whatever. You know, you're gonna buy all this here and this there and whatever else, I mean, you're gonna get it from one supplier.
Yeah, there's a issue of convenience a lot of times, and I don't know if there's as much of a convenience issue on this one. You get your lumber at one place and you can go across the street and get your sheet rock and somewhere else and get your paint, I mean, you can.
Sure.
You can play it, but this one is in Illinois, but I'm still leaning towards an eleven hundred dollars difference. It's a lot of other tools we can get for maintenance that they need.
If you look at a total cost, Hertz is fourteen thousand, Fabic is fourteen five, and then if you do O E R, they're fifteen three, so.
If you buy it all together?
Buy it all together.
I mean, that's why we did it this way, so we'd have the option of picking and choosing.
Correct.
We didn't give them a option of bidding it as a package deal either, saying just, told them we did it separate.
We just said, I wrote down exactly what I said, lowest responsible bidder, whose offer is best respond to the quality, capacity and service part of this Cole County. So we can award it however you see best.
Well, you know, sometimes with, with equipment and stuff, and, yeah, this is transportable, but when it does break and we have to call Fabic to come service it, cause we can't load it up and, cause it's broke. Um, they're gonna be a little more apt to come out and help us out if they sold us all the equipment, so, I mean, that's, that's kinda where I'm at on it. Total, total package, they're five hundred more than, than Hertz St. Louis, but Hertz isn't gonna come out and help us with it, Fabic is, so. But, whatever you wanna do. Got any thoughts, Mark?
I mean, I prefer to have a local service provider because I think there's a value in that. I tend to agree with you that if you buy a car, use a car as an example, at out of town, you wanna get it fixed in town, they have to do the warranty work, they don't get choice. They're not, they're not smiling and jumping out and giving them warranty work because the other name's on the back of the bumper, so, you know, there's an advantage to having them local. There's an advantage from a service perspective, there's a slight cost differential. Um, I think that the local service providing overweighs the slight cost differential. I'd be more inclined to award it to Fabic. We've always kinda said, you know, we, we wanna evaluate these things fairly on the best, lowest and best bid. And obviously, if they were tied, if it was exactly the same dollar amount, we would award to Fabic a hundred percent of the time. We wouldn't even have a debate about it, it would be a two second vote. Uh, the numbers are different, we're gonna have parsing it out, the same rationale for going with O E R mandates that we go to Hertz. So we should, you know, if, if, if we're not gonna award it to Fabic, then we should buy the genie from Hertz and save five dollars, and we should buy the straddle from O E R and save a thousand dollars.
But I'm putting more than five dollar value on it being local, but less than eleven hundred dollar value, so. I don't know where that number is, as, as a, as an old professor told me, where do you draw the line? There. You don't know where you draw the line until you reach it. I, I just think, you know, we can help the local suppliers out, vendors out, they've gotta help us out, and there's always so much we can do, so you can. That's a fair, I, I don't disagree with that. I'm still towards the genie from Fabic and a straddle from O E R, you can call the vote if y'all are ready to vote. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Um, I guess, you, would you like a roll call on this? We don't need it because there's no contract, if we have a contract, we can't.
Do we need a contract for this?
We have to sign something, don't we, Debbie? We award bids, usually we have some, no? Alright. Alright, all those favors, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries, bids awarded, uh, to Fabic for fourteen five seventy-four for both. Oh, a bad roll, I lost one last week too.
Alright.
How long's your furniture discussion gonna be?
It shouldn't be real long, I would think.
See, Dave, you should never have said, I got all day.
This, this is a welcome break from the office.
Okay.
Um, we're just looking for direction from you guys, um, obviously they're gonna be taking furniture, we do have the option to use a cooperative bidding agreement and go through a vendor and just do it that way. If we do wanna bid it through the county competitively, um, we're really gonna need some direction as far as someone coming in and helping us decide on what grade, for lack of a better word, of furniture we're gonna need. Um, I've had the opportunities to talk to SAMCO and Shreefer's. The conversation with SAMCO included a CAD drawing, which I don't know whether we need that or not, but I believe that was ninety dollars an hour, they estimated that would cost about four or five hundred dollars. Um, Joe Burns, Gutterworth Shreefer's indicated that they would come out and, um, kinda show EMS some products, help them determine what's, you know, necessary, no CAD drawings or anything like that, but they would do that service for free. I don't know whether SAMCO would do that or not, but those are the conversations I've had, just kinda looking for some direction, if we did wanna bid it competitively through the county, or if we wanted to utilize an existing cooperative procurement contract, or how we wanted to do it.
We're gonna be able to get it in time if we bid it, if we get the ball rolling?
My understanding, which take that for what it's worth, is that there's some that's more readily available off the shelf type furniture, and then there's some that's not. And so, I think either way, we need to get the ball rolling, but I think that it is doable to get it on time if they know going in that the deadline is whenever it is August, somebody needs to tell me that for sure, but.
When are they finishing it up, Mike?
Tentatively twenty-one August.
Okay, so that should give us.
A month and a half, maybe?
It's not very much late time for them to get furniture.
If we follow the cooperative bid and get it off the shelf, that drastically reduces the, the wait time, you might say. With Shreefer's, forgive my vernacular, they're, them willing to come out and we can use the cooperative, uh, bid agreement that's established, we can get it going immediately.
I think if they came out and told us, hey, this is kind of what you're needing, this line of furniture, we could get something out pretty quickly. What's today Wednesday, we could probably even get it out, well, no, I'd say next week.
You have to spec out how many of everything you need, um.
And I think that they would help with that.
Yeah, if they're, you know, we've gone through that before.
Yeah, it's kind of a.
And you end up with, well, you guys need six decks desks that have to be six feet and a, six and a half feet wide. And it turns out that the only company that makes a six and a half foot wide desk, no obhold is us, is this company, everybody else makes a seven foot wide desk. You know, that's, we've had that kinda stuff go on before, it's really, it's really hard to do it.
Yeah, it is.
It's really hard to do it.
I don't know, we, we had the conversation and I'm just, I don't really wanna pay for somebody to come out and, and draw something up and, and I don't care how rough it is, I mean, I want it to be good quality stuff. That's gonna work for my, for a long time, but, uh, and, and then we kinda got two issues there, so we got, we got bunk beds, basically, and then we got kinda office furniture.
And appliances, right, or a few appliances?
Well, appliances, I think we can go get those from wherever. Um, you know, we can go pick out appliances from Lowe's or wherever, um.
Our biggest is the bedding and the everyday twenty-four hours a day furniture you're gonna be using.
Right, right.
And.
So I, I guess where I'm at on this is I just, I looked online, I'd like to see us get some type of steel bunks, like, um, a military style bunk. Um, might not be the cheapest, but to me, that's the thing that's gonna be wobbly and fall apart, so, um, and I know those aren't gonna be cheap, but, and I don't, and I don't know if, how many people are gonna be getting in the top bunk too. And so, that'd be a question for you, Mike, do we, do we just need single steel beds, or do we actually need bunk beds?
I think for right now, with the increase in room, we're gonna have, you know, the bunk rooms, you know, we, we have two now, we're gonna double that. Uh, I believe right now for the foreseeable future, if we just have single beds in that room, uh, or maybe one room, we put two in and then one in the other, not necessarily bunk beds, but maybe an extra bed. Uh, I think that would be more than appropriate, I, I don't think we need to cross the line of bunk beds right now, but I would defer to your.
I mean, so, in the rooms besides beds and, you know, mattresses and stuff, I mean, do we need, do we need end tables, do we need anything like that, or is that something that we could get from an office supply place?
Right, no, right, right now, the bedding, uh, and more so, you know, like a, a stand-up locker, you don't necessarily need an end table or a dresser, but just a big place.
Something to put your stuff in.
The equipment.
Okay. I don't know, it just, it just seems like we're talking about stuff that maybe Shreefer's or SAMCO doesn't handle, I mean, with lockers and, and steel beds. Um, and I'm okay with maybe parting some of that stuff out, but there's no point in bringing Shreefer's or SAMCO in if they can only supply a certain amount of stuff.
Well, we need to find that out, and that's the direction we need, if it is approved to engage either vendor, they come out, we show them the prints and we walk from there. Uh, we have cooperative purchasing agreements that would, uh, we could fall under so we don't have to follow the, the bid and spec and all that around. So that's just the direction we need, go ahead and engage or spec it, bid it, what.
How did we bid the law enforcement center, Greg, how'd we do yours?
SAMCO did though.
They actually drew it up.
SAMCO came in and drew it up, and then there was discussion on.
The availability of stuff and if it was just stuff they could get basically to fit that size.
I mean. I don't know how close they were to a little bit or not. We have a vendor that says they will come in for free to do that.
Right.
There you go, we, they also have the cooperative purchasing agreement.
But we don't want them drawing up stuff that's just gonna fit in their realm of stuff, and that's what, we want it to keep it generic and. Unless they're under the government contract, in which case, who cares?
Right, if we follow the cooperative purchasing agreement, it don't matter what they throw at us.
They come in, they spec it, they bid it, we buy it from them.
Yeah. That level.
But then if we do that, you know, we need to pick someone to roll with them.
To what?
To roll with them, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go off of.
Basically picking winners and losers.
Well, but I mean, if they're on a, if they're on a state or federal contract and we can piggyback on it, both vendors are?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they, each, I'm sure there's multiple people that have access to different, I mean, there's the US communities, there's T C P N, I don't know what all's out there, you know, that someone could possibly provide pricing off of.
Is Shreefer's on contract?
I talked to him and I know that they have some stuff in the works, I'd have to go back and see exactly.
For sure.
Who's on these cooperative?
I know that SAMCO is, I know this because the T C P N contract is what we utilized across the street in for Maryland's office.
Okay, so if we have them on a state contract, then that solves that problem. Right. If Shreefer's can come in and say, here's our state contract, then we have to bring it back. If they're in the process of. If they're in the process of trying to get on one, then, you know, that doesn't help. So the, the decision is, do you wanna move forward with SAMCO unless Shreefer's has a signed contract? Or do you wanna just throw the whole thing out and bid? And if it's the latter option, then who's gonna spec it all?
I'd rather bid it and give everybody a fair shot at it, personally. But like we did with Public Administrator's Office, we kinda drug our feet or somewhere got, fell through the cracks. And we, we had the option of going state contract. That was SAMCO. They did a great job. Got it done. Now, are we behind the eight ball on this one again? And if we are, we'll have to start figuring it out.
If we go the bid route, uh, you know, keep in mind, there's already existing contracts. If we go the bid route, yes, that's gonna add time. I'm not a furniture guy. I'll be direct. Somebody is gonna have to help me spec this out.
Not a very good mechanic.
Yeah, I'm not a very good mechanic. I have ten stitches show. So to be direct, if, if we have to spec this out, I'm gonna have to get somebody to come in and say, "Hey, this is what you're..."
But you already said that Shreefer's would do that for free.
Yes, that's what Jennifer...
So will we have time to let them do it and get the product? Or are we gonna get them to draw it up and go, "Well, we can't hit it?"
If you're gonna spec it out, you cannot have a potential bidder do the specs.
Should, should not, yeah.
That's the problem we've run into in the past. If you're gonna spec it out, you need to get somebody who will not bid. Therefore, you're gonna pay somebody to spec it out, unless you have somebody in-house that can spec it.
Jeff? Have you seen my drawings? Turn this off so I can cuss.
Don't do that. It's bad for ya.
Yeah, no.
Are you needing a ton of furniture, or what do you, desk, or chairs?
It's desks, chairs, beds, lockers. There's, there's a fair amount of stuff involved.
Right. There's no generic way to bid it and say, "We need five-foot desk here."
There is, but somebody's gonna come in with particle board, you know what I mean? And I, I know I'm not qualified to go in and say, "This is good enough, this is not." So if someone else is comfortable with doing that...
Yeah, you don't want the ones you're gonna buy from a box store and have to put together.
If we don't have an appropriate vendor or person come in and hold our hand, for lack of a better description, we're gonna set ourselves up for particle board and six months down the road, we're gonna expend it.
Do they have any kinda, when you spec them out, you can say that they have metal legs, sides, drawers, arms?
We can do whatever we want, but someone needs to sit down then and figure it all that out, and I, I'm not qualified to do that. I don't think Mike is qualified to do that.
All right, we've pounded sand on this now. Twenty-five minutes.
This won't take long, don't worry.
My inclination is, my preference is to either go with SAMCO unless Shreefer's can come up with a, a signed contract and move on.
Let's go.
Let's get it done. That's my preference.
Respectfully stated, yes, I, I would agree with that. Keep the ball rolling.
So, you wanna bid it? Chris?
Yeah, I mean, I wanna bid it, too, and this, this is crazy, so, I mean, I just can't believe that there's that much to it.
You couldn't believe there's that much to janitorial supplies either.
Well, I realize that, I mean...
And that's what, you know, it's gonna get that way with this, too, 'cause they're gonna come in and say, "Well, you didn't say this had to be this." And like Jen said, didn't you grab somebody to come in with something that's not up to par, and Mike's gonna...
I mean, a cooperative agreement is a whole lot different than state contract.
That's the same, I mean...
It's, they're both, I mean, I don't know where you're, in what way you mean, but they're both competitively big. I don't know...
Well, I, I just don't know. I mean, everything that's on the state contract falls under their office equipment, so they've outlined every price out there. I mean, that's, that's where I'm at. I don't...
Yeah, I would say that there's a plethora of items available, and I would say that whoever is on that contract, that they would help Mike and whoever to determine what's appropriate where, you know?
It's just like our medical supplies when we join a cooperative agreement. Every stitch, every piece has its competitively bid price that's on that cooperative agreement.
So you guys wanna bid? The next issue, I mean, obviously that's...
We're gonna have to pay an architect.
Obviously, that's a two-to-one, that's a, you know, I'm not, I don't need, we don't need to vote it, but obviously you guys...
I wanna bid, I'm not saying that's what we're gonna go.
You guys have made it clear, so if we're gonna bid, we need to figure out how, who we're gonna retain to come up with plans and specs. Greg?
If you've got two people that have cooperative agreements with the state, can't you just pick and choose which is the cheaper in each area, if that meets what you want?
Well, I, I think I hear that these guys wanna actually bid it to give everybody an opportunity, not just those two vendors.
But I'm also not gonna pay somebody $2,000 to come in and draw up a plan, so if we gotta kind, uh, the cooperative bid, then... What's, uh, how soon can you find out what Shreefer's got?
I can, I can go out there and probably get ahold of them if he's in the office.
Who else do we, do we need to contact to see if they have, if they're on a cooperative?
Just Shreefer's, I mean?
I'd say you guys probably know SAMCO and Shreefer's is who I think of when I think of office furniture in town.
Locally.
Yeah, I mean, you...
Jeff City or where?
Yeah, One, One Stop still do furniture, I think they do furniture out of the catalog.
Local, Cole County.
One Stop's here. We got, I guess Staples, they sell office furniture. They're local.
Yeah. I mean Walmart, I mean, we can kick the door open wide.
But I don't think Walmart sells furniture. I think they only, they, they only sell pa, um, uh, kits. I don't think they, I don't think they sell...
Go make your phone call.
Yeah, let's, let's, let Jennifer make her call, and let's talk to Dave and...
All right, Dave.
Good morning.
That's a well-welcome break.
Interesting, I like, I like watching the interaction that you guys have. It's, it's, uh, it's refreshing. As a member of Cole County, I appreciate the, the lengths that you go to, to be very good tax stewards of our dollars, so. That being said, it's my segue into, let me talk a little bit about MoDOT, the Need for Money, House Joint Resolution 68 slash Constitutional Amendment 7, what we're doing, what we've done, what we're doing, and what will be happening between now and August 5th. And the magic date of August 5th is that's the date the Constitutional Amendment 7 will be put on the ballot for Missourians to decide whether or not to fund transportation in a temporary nature for 10 years at three-quarters cent sales tax statewide. So let me, let me talk about where we've been. And we used to have a program of $1.3 billion up till 2007. Got a lot of work done around the state. That was generally funded through vehicle sales tax, vehicle license renewal fees, and gas tax. And supplemented to that, $1.3 billion was a little bit of bonding and was the American Reinvestment and Recovery Act, otherwise known as ERA, an executive order by the President. Since then, we've dropped in our funding from $1.3 billion to our current level, which is about $700 million. And our proposed funding, about 2017, will be somewhere in the neighborhood of $325 million. Why? Why do you ask? Well, we are not bonding jobs. You know, the ERA, ERA is over. And the fuel taxes are no longer sustaining revenue stream for the state as vehicles continue to get higher and higher gas mileage. You can go to any car lot and buy a 40-mile-per-gallon vehicle. In many of those lots, you can buy a 50 or higher mile-per-gallon vehicle. You can also buy electric vehicles that pay absolutely no fuel tax, and you can buy hybrid vehicles pretty much anywhere anymore that get very high gas mileage. So, that being said, that's the future, and that is how we have been, and many states are funded, through fuel tax. And, and it's a, it's a means and method by which users pay for improvements to highway system. Those that buy fuel use the system, thereby collecting those fees. We have not had an increase in the fuel tax in the state since 1992, and we are still at that funding level of 17 cents on gas or diesel across the board for state funds. The federal government collects 18.4 and 24.4, 24.4 on diesel. So you can kinda see where we're at. So our funding has kinda dropped. In about 2008, we started talking to Missourians through our Conversation for Moving Missouri Forward. We could see what was coming. We knew that this was coming. We wanted to prepare folks to start having that conversation of, "Hey, this is what's coming on the horizon. What would you like us to do about it?" And that was kinda the gist behind that conversation. In about 2012, the Speaker of the House, Speaker Tilly, put together a panel called the Blue Ribbon Citizens Committee, made up of businessmen and women around the state, traveled around the state, talked to Missourians, said, "What are the big needs that are out there in Missouri, and how do you wanna pay for it?" Well, not surprisingly, you had folks say that they wanted to see a fuel tax increase, and then you had folks that said they don't wanna see a fuel tax increase. You had folks that said tolls, you had folks that said don't tolls. You had folks that say, "Do some sort of sales tax, do some combination." You had others that said, "You're doing fine, stay with what you've got." So, not surprisingly, you had that across the board. The report generalized, that came out of the Blue Ribbon Citizens Committee, generalized those conversations around Missouri and said, basically, Missouri's got hundreds of thousands of dol, hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of needs, even into the billions of dollars, and they need some sort of funding mechanism to pay for. General and left it at that. So, we initiated last year a movement called On the Move, where we, as a department, went out and talked to folks and said, "What is it you want from your system?" We've talked about the needs, we've talked about through the, through the blueprint, we talked about those big needs with folks, but really, what is the, the bottom level? What do people want from your system? And, and we talked to tens of thousands of people across the state. We showed up at track meets, we showed up at Casey's parking lots, we showed up at, at senior centers or, or Cinco de Mayo's, we were there. And it was just a general, "What do you want us to do with the transportation system?" And go from there. And, and not surprisingly, our 33,000 miles of road, our 10,000 bridges that we have in the state, people said, "You gotta take care of what you've got." Okay, that's pretty basic, pretty key, and that's kinda the root of anything. You own a house, and you take care of the roof, gotta make sure your water heater's working, you gotta make sure your appliances are running. So take care of the infrastructure that you have. Secondly, they told us, "Continue to do projects that create safety or increase safety." And that's pretty basic. We get that, and we've been pretty good at that. Our fatalities have dropped, not half, but they've gone from over 1,200 a year at about 2008 to, we were just over 700 last year. So we've made huge steps in decreasing that. Vehicle mile traveled is dropping a little bit, but still, since that timeframe, people have, are driving more than they were in 2007. So you can see that there are big steps that have been made in safety, and that's from rumble strips, wider stripes, bigger signs we put on roads, resurfacing roads, adding shoulders, all those things that give people an opportunity to have better recovery if something, if something should happen. They also told us that they want projects that promote economic development, you know, the opportunity to bring in, spur growth in a community or a city or a county. And lastly, they said, you know, "You've got, you've got all these miles, you've got all these bridges, but you also have this other stuff that's out there with airports and ports and bike-ped facilities." You know, we, we want better choices of those other modes of transportation. So that's our four pillars that we started working with. And based upon that, we met with, we started to meet with our planning partners late last fall. And locally, we have two planning groups. One is the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, which Jeff, Commissioner Holzer chairs, and we have the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission, which is out of Ashland, which covers the northern counties of our district, Howard, Boone, Monata, Cooper, and Callaway County, and Cole. And so they, so these two kind of interact together, obviously, 'cause they do overlap areas, with the Campo Group covering the Jeff City, Towes, St. Thomas, and, or St. Martin and Holt Summit area. So it's kind of enveloped within the mid-mo area, so, but these two groups work together well. And as we were going through all of this discussions, House Joint Resolution 68, which was introduced in January of 2013 to the legislature, was going through its process last year, and then it was going through the process again this year. It did not pass out of the General Assembly last year. So, but one of the requirements that we knew was gonna be part of that bill was, we needed to develop a list of projects. We needed to develop something that we'd be able to take to the people of Missouri, say, "Here's the type of things that you're going to get with this," at the time, one-cent sales tax is what the proposal was. As part of the concessions and part of the negotiations that go on with any bill, it was reduced from one, one cent down to three-quarters cent. That's what passed the, the Senate and the House late in session, so we are in our process of identifying that work. Now, let me back up a few steps. The work that we've identified has been nothing new. We actually went into this as a district. Our folks knew what the big projects were in central Missouri that, that were going to be things that our planning partners wanted, the public wanted. Things like increasing the capacity on Route 63, increasing capacity on Route 50, increasing our, our, decreasing our Condition III bridges, which are really in bad shape, our one-lane bridges, putting more shoulders on roads. Some of these bigger things that, quite frankly, just weren't gonna be able to be done with a $325 million program. So we went into this planning group, we pulled our five folks together, we sat them around a table and said, "What are the big things in each area? Let's talk about it." We held two prioritization meetings, we call them. We're developing a list. The list will be made public on Friday, two days from now at noon. It'll be out for public comment for one week until the 19th at 5:00 PM. I'm kinda getting rumblings that we may extend that comment period a little bit. We'll have to see what our commission's pleasure is on that. I mentioned this will be in an August 5th ballot. The couple of things of local interest, we're gonna be holding two public meetings in Columbia and Jefferson City. Columbia will be next Monday, the 16th, at the Art Center, 4:00 to 7:00 PM. The other will be here in Jeff City, Jefferson City at the 19th. It'll be at the Missouri Chamber of Commerce and Industry on the 19th from 4:00 to 7:00 PM also. So these are open to the public. We'll have the list on display of the, the projects that our five organizations came up from. I will say that we've had very little input MoDOT from the stance of our big jobs. Our 50, 63, Witten Expressway, 740, I-70-type stuff, the big things, all of that came from our planning group. We kinda sat around on the outside of the table, let our folks kind of, our planning partners hash these out and identify what are the key projects for this 18-county central district area. And when I say 18 counties, those that are familiar, we go from Petosi to Fayette, and we go from Kingdom City to Lebanon. We're a pretty, pretty wide area, and in that, we've got lots of stuff. Three nuclear reactors, two major universities, SEC-major university. We have one of the highest tourist attractions with the lake. We have I-70, we have I-44, we have a major military institution in Fort Leonard Wood. We have the capital. We have mining, we have timber, we have agriculture, we have a lot of stuff in this district. So our needs vary from, "I've gotta get trees out of the forest and, out of, over a minor road to a major highway," to, "I gotta get across I-70 in, in less than 20 seconds." So, we've got a lot of stuff that, that folks need with our system. And, and then they wanna do that on a train, or they wanna do it on a bus, or they wanna be able to ride across Missouri on a bicycle at the same time. And that's, that's our challenge, is identifying all those things. So I just, I'm not here to talk about the projects today. I'm sure you're all salivating. You don't look like it, really. But I'm sure you really wanna know what those are, and we're gonna talk, we're gonna put those out on our website Friday at noon. You know, some of the big things that did rise to the top in this area, I can say, 50 and 63 are both big issues that, that our planning partners identified we need to work on. Lot of shoulder routes, a lot of bridges around the area, some train stuff, some pedestrian and bike-ped stuff, some of the Witten Expressway that's gonna connect from Lafayette Street headed to the west. So there's a lot of those things, so pay atten, there's some things across the river, too, that we, we kind of added in a little bit, particularly... particularly the interchange on the South Summit Drive, just at Old Summit, and some connecting pieces over between the interchanges and the bridge. So there's some of those things that are going to be of interest to this area. So we're going to be looking for as much public input as we can get. Obviously, the more eyes we have on this, the more that we have folks looking at it. Three-quarters cent is a lot of money, but it barely scratches the surface of what Missourians have told us they want. So the list, as challenging as it was to put together, still leaves a lot of needs on the table. A lot of things that we want to do, Missourians want us to do. There's still safety work out there that needs to be done. This, this job, although I'm not campaigning or advocating for it, has been billed as a piece of legislation that will create safety and create jobs for Missourians. So that's walking that fine line of campaigning for it. So I'm going to stop right there. But I've got some information I'll leave with, with the gentleman, kind of the timeline and facts that go along with it. And if you're not registered to vote, you have till July 9th to get registered to vote. I'm sure everybody here is registered to vote. Just putting that out there. You all can help us by detailing that also. So we'll have lots of media at these two public meetings. We're trying to get as much involvement. We've had some media where we've been working with, we worked with the Columbia Chamber earlier this week. Did a little bit of general information at the same time. An opposition group wanted to speak, which they did. The Columbia Chamber also offered Senator Kehoe the opportunity to speak. And if you know the Senator, he won't pass up an opportunity. And he was, he did speak on it. So there was good dialogue between both this, this organization that is in opposition to this tax and the Senator who's been involved with this for at least, not just this bill, but in funding in general for many, many, many years. So what, what questions do you have, does the panel have? Chris, Jeff?
I always beat it up because of the funding coming to the counties. I know they're trying to get the counties on board with it. But it's all funded. Our, our part is determined by the cart funding. I know that's an old formula. I still don't like it, but not much we can do about it.
And I think what Jeff's talking about, sorry, Commissioner Holster's talking about, is a, is a formula that's based on, I think, population in the county, miles of road in the county.
Non, non, yeah, it's, it's based upon non-urbanized population.
Rural areas.
And rural roads.
And rural roads.
Roads ratio to the total ratio of the state, and then the assessed valuation of, so. And you sent me the information.
We come out, we come out kind of a loser on it. I mean, that's the reality of it. You know, Camden County comes out a massive winner.
Yeah, and that's the valuation that you just talked about.
And it's because that so much of the value of stuff around Lake the Ozarks is outside of Osage Beach and...
Camden.
Yeah, the cities down there.
I mean, I'm going to sound greedy because I want to get as much as I can for Cole County.
I agree.
So I'm not going to apologize.
No, I agree with you entirely.
We've talked to Senator Kehoe about it, and he said, you know, look, we're gonna try to get as much as we can for Cole County and...
But we're getting, you know, hopefully the list will have major projects for our county and our community. And, you know, what we don't get through the dollars into our accounts will go into infrastructure improvements in our community.
And I think one of the things that we've heard that's not, I'm not going to call it one of the big, big shiny things, but it's probably something that offers some, that's going to offer some issue or some relief is going to be Route B from Wardsville to Mida is something that's on the list for shouldering. So we'll just, we'll see where it goes through the process. But I know that's something that we've worked with. I know Commissioner Ellinger and Commissioner Holster have both had conversations with me about it. We've talked about some of the ideas we can do at the intersection of, I call it BMW, right there inside Wardsville.
I haven't heard of that before, I looked at that.
BMW?
BMW, yeah, that's good.
But it's right there, that intersection in Wardsville. And I don't know if that will be included in this part that we're talking about from Wardsville to Mida, or if that's, we may have to see what value we get out of that versus just doing the shouldering between those two cities. So that, that's something that's, that was identified as a need from the, through the Mid-Mo Regional Planning Commission. And it does span, actually goes into, I think it's, I think it's Merrimack, might be Lake Ozark Council, local governments area. But it's, it's a need. So we've got it on there now, and so you'll be able to see that. There's, there's a pretty fair amount of good work between Cole and Boone County that's on this list.
How much of this funding is going to go towards new projects versus maintaining existing highways and roadways?
You know, percentage-wise, I don't have the number, Commissioner. We have a fair amount. When we talk about shouldering jobs, it's an expansion work. Because we're going to take a two-lane road with either no shoulders or aggregate shoulders, or shoulders, and we're going to put some shoulders on it. So we call it more of an improvement. It's a little bit more than, than what we would call maintaining a road, even though we are going to resurface it at the same time we put on shoulders. So there'll be, there's a, there's a pretty good, pretty fair amount of that over the 10-year period. There's some system expansion stuff when we're talking about 50 and 63. And I really didn't even touch on I-70, but, so let me loop back to that in a second. You're talking about additional structure to that, to those, to that type of thing. So there is, there is a chunk, and we started out with, I don't know, math in my head, about 25% was going to be stuff to take care of what we have. But I also include in that the adding the shoulders. So if I take that part out, we're probably looking at maybe 10 to 15, maybe 15% of stuff that's just going to be actually maintaining what we have. So, and that'd be like bridge work, rehab, or replacing small bridges, any bridge really, and some other things. So it's really kind of small. The big stuff is mostly expansion or new, new stuff.
I guess just my, my point on that, Dave, being is that, you know, as, the more stuff that we build, the more stuff we have to maintain in the future. And I'm sure you guys have had discussions about that. And just, at some point, you got to kind of sit back and, and maintain what you currently have. And of course, we had some rough winters here. So I'm sure you guys are seeing that in your, in your budget as well.
Yeah, you know, one thing that we're, we're going into this with, that if we build, let's just take 50 and 60, 50 to the east and 63 as an example. When I talk about 63, I'm talking about the stretch between the 50, 63 interchange, east of Jeff City down to Rolla. If we build new alignment, we're going to be giving away that old road. And I've already talked to one member of the Osage County Commission to let them know, hey, this is, this is a pretty big deal for Osage County. New alignment on 50, if we go around Lynn, and a new alignment for 63 on wherever, however far we might go, that old road becomes Osage County Road, and they need to agree to take it. And so, I mean, we're not going to give them the road in the condition it's in. So, I mean, that's just something we have to negotiate with them. And it's, it's not new. We've done this with Monata County when we built 50 to the west. We're actually already doing it with Osage County. When we get this 50 job done in Osage, we'll repay from Loose Creek to the east where it's going to connect in. So they'll get, I call it a shiny new road, new asphalt, new paint. With the decreased level of traffic on that road, it should get them 10 to 15 years of service before they may have to do something. And then we've done this with the city of Osage Beach, when we built 54 through there. Instead of doing anything to it, they opted for cash. And so Osage County may, may look at some sort of mixture because they'll have parts of 50 and they'll have parts of old 63. So, I mean, that, that's part of it. So any new infrastructure we build, we're going to, we have to get rid of some of the old infrastructure, too.
Okay. You give us update on Lafayette Street while you're here?
What would you like to know?
Update on Lafayette Street, that's where we're at.
It's going to be late September.
We got the, we got the fully executed contract. So we're good on that.
We're pleased, thank you. It's moving forward. We're still in right-of-way negotiations with a few folks. We have the deed to the Boys and Girls Club, so we've got that done. We are still working with the gentleman for the barber shop, working on negotiations with that. We're pretty close. And I think there's still one piece of property on the north side that we are working with that I don't think our folks see to be an issue. Some of these late right-of-way things have come up because we did our best to avoid as much as we possibly could having any effect on the right-of-way. But as we got into bridge design, particularly for the westbound on-ramp, eastbound off-ramp, there are two, there are bridges, bridges on each of those. And when you do that, we enter in, we get into some no-rise flood situations, which I've not had to deal with, but I know our folks, it's had some consternation with some of our folks. And in doing that, have caused us to maybe have to take some properties that we didn't intend to or plan on in the beginning. So we're doing some work there that is coming down to crunch time in the end. Our update I had yesterday is the September lighting is still good. We're still headed that direction, and it looks like we'll be okay. So the executed agreement is wonderful, and we're happy with that and appreciate it. And all that stuff will be, all the enhancements that we talked about will be in as part of the money that the city and county have chipped in. So any other questions?
No.
No, I think that's great. So we're looking forward to getting that going, so.
And that, that gentleman is the last large project that we have as a district in our 18 counties. The Lafayette Street interchange is really the last big one. If this tax doesn't pass, we're strictly in maintenance mode, which we, we're kind of in that right now, just to preserve what we have as far as we can money-wise. So it's the stark reality of maintaining our system without the funding increase. I mentioned that we're looking at a $325 million construction program. It takes us just $485 billion a year to maintain what we have. So we already have a $160 million gap statewide if, if we don't see some increase in funding. So that's, that's kind of the issue that we have. Again, I'm making those, putting those out there as facts, not, not campaigning or advocating, so.
Of course, nobody likes to see an additional tax, me included. But, but I think, I think this is important, that we maintain our roads and our infrastructure. And so I'm, I'm in support of, of this, and, and we'll be voting for it. But what, what is it? Is there a couple of things that we could help MoDOT in pushing this forward and trying to get this passed?
You know, I think, I think the public involvement that we're going to need in this, getting as many eyes on this as possible is maybe something you all can help us with. Encouraging the public to go view the list. Come to one of these two public meetings in Columbia Monday or Jefferson City on Thursday. Getting folks out, leaving comments on our website. I mean, they don't have to leave a comment if they support it, that's not what we're looking for. But if they have project suggestions, then by all means, let us know. We, we received through our On the Move effort and the blueprint for the Blue Ribbon Citizens Committee efforts, we have tens of thousands of jobs totaling somewhere in the neighborhood of $77 billion that people would like us to do over 20 years. So we have no shortage of wants and needs from Missourians. And so that's why it's been a little difficult in putting together a list that will really, we can do over 10 years to the tune of about $480-some million. Now, the information I'll give you will say some different numbers on what this will provide. Let me talk a little bit about I-70, so I'd loop back to that. I-70 is a project we plan to do off the top. We plan to take $500 million out of this money that we're going to get. We're going to couple it with some bonding money. We're going to couple it with some existing funds that we have and make a $1.5 billion project, a design build job, that we'll do from Wentzville to Blue Springs, give or take. And we'll, the, the primary goal, the top goal on this, if you're familiar with design build jobs, is we list priorities. And then for best value type work, we can put the dollar value out there. Here's our priorities. Design, build, consultant, contractors, go find out how much you can do of these priorities with this amount of money. And so that's, that's what our goal is. And the first and foremost goal is going to be getting six lanes across the straight, state from those two destinations, from Wentzville all the way to the Blue Springs area. Once you hit those areas, you already know that those expand into six or more lanes in a very urban area. And so we're just going to make that six lanes across the state. That takes care of many things in between, like, like the Roachport Bridge, which is only four lanes right now. That'll be a requirement in the job, that we have to have a new Roachport Bridge, which is a pretty big deal for our district, because it's in our district, and it's a pretty expensive structure. And then there are things that the district is going to have to chip in if we want certain things done at interchanges. I'm not so concerned about the Kingdom City interchange, it has many needs, but I'm very concerned about the I-70, 63.